The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, October 25, 2016. It is 6:00 P.M. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Thank you Heavenly Father Jesus for this wonderful, wonderful day that you provided for us. Thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us. We know Heavenly Father Jesus that as we come to you and ask that you provide. And we're asking you tonight Heavenly Father just to put your blessing upon each one of these on the city council, Heavenly Father Jesus, as they make decisions for our city. We just ask Heavenly Father that you give them wisdom, knowledge. And Heavenly Father Jesus, let all things go in a civil manner. Let things be upholding to you Heavenly Father. Let nothing be said or done that wouldn't honor you. Heavenly Father Jesus, we ask for healing upon our land and Heavenly Father upon our bodies. We just ask tonight that you provide that. You said by your stripes on that cross you would. And you said Heavenly Father Jesus, if we'd humble ourselves and pray that you would heal this land. We just ask that tonight. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Roll call.
Council authority member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council authority member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council authority member Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Janine Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
There will be no changes to the agenda tonight. Conflicts of interest, any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we'll commence public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council LRA board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the city council LRA board. Are there any public comments?
I'm Lester Williams. I live on Roseale. I was here two weeks ago. And first of all, I'd like to thank Mike Rydell. Couple days after the hearing, he called me up. They come out, found out I was, were waters available. And then I called Ms. Garcia, and she says that under this rule, the ordinance, that there's nothing can be done about this. You know, the city can't finance any of it. And like I told her and Mr. Rydell, I'd come up with half, no problem. But there's no way that I can come up with $20,000, and that's what we're looking at, 20 or more. You know, I could have a well drilled for a lot less, and I can even make payments with it. And I don't know what to do. You the folks that can change these city ordinances, or make amendments to them, or do whatever. So if y'all can't do anything for me with changing the city ordinance, maybe yous can come up together and make me a personal loan. I can pay it off in six months, you know, whatever the balance would be. But as far as what the city requires me to do, I have no problem coming up with half of it. But there's got to be something done because eventually there's going to be other people that's going to have the same problem with all the orchard and stuff going in. Us with shallow wells, they're going to drain us. But I mean, the city, I would certainly appreciate it if yous would all get together and see what could be done about it. I'm getting tired of hauling water, you know? So if yous could do anything, it would be greatly appreciated. And thank you for the time for speaking.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we're going to move forward to the consent calendar consisting of Item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of August 9, 2016, city council and local redevelopment authority minutes. Item 3B1, approval of September 29, 2016, special city council minutes. Item 3B2, approval of October 11, 2016, city council and local redevelopment authority minutes. Item 3B3, approval of October 17, 2016, special council minutes. Item 3C, resolution approving the submission of an application for youth soccer and recreation development program grant funds. Item 3D, a resolution authorizing the execution of the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District New Alternative Fuel Vehicle Purchase Grant Zero Electric Police Motorcycles. That should be zero emission electric police motorcycles. Is there any, any person wanting to comment on any of the items? Anyone on the council?
I'm not sure, but I have to check it for a clerk. I'm not sure that I attended the September 29.
Anyone else? Okay, shall we have some action on this?
Make a motion that we approve the consent calendar?
A second motion?
We have a motion to approve and a second with one abstention on what, what abstention? Okay. 3B1.
Council authority members Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Tucker. Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5, public hearings. The continued first reading and introduction by title only of proposed ordinance amending Chapter 73 Traffic Schedules of Title VII Traffic Code of the Riverbank Municipal Code.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. On October 11, we brought this item forward to you for your consideration. There was some discussion regarding several segments of the road that we were proposing to make speed limit changes to, and we have gathered additional information from both our legal counsel and our traffic engineers who prepared the studies that were the basis of the recommendations. Kathleen Kleek has an updated report for you today, and we bring this forward for your consideration and first reading.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. So tonight, we're introducing the ordinance amending Chapter 73 Traffic Schedules of Title VII Traffic Code of the Riverbank Municipal Code. So based on engineering and traffic surveys, the ordinance amendment recommends changes to speed limits on 13 street segments in the city of Riverbank. So speed limits in California are governed by the California Vehicle Code and the 2014 California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices Standards Guidance and Options for Establishing Speed Limits, which can be legally enforced by radar. If a city enforces speed limits by way of radar, Vehicle Code Section 40802 requires the preparation of an engineering and traffic survey to justify the speed limits on those designated streets. The engineering and traffic study reports that were each done include, included the consideration of prevailing speeds as determined by traffic engineering measurements, collision records, highway traffic and roadside conditions not readily apparent to the driver. So traffic speeds must be supported by an engineering and traffic study. Otherwise, if speed limits are too low, the city could face liability for setting speed traps. And I know you've heard, you heard this the other night, but just kind of wanted to go through it one more time. Failure to enforce local speed limits through the use of radar could lead to significant increases in local speeds. The traffic manual provides that speed limits are generally established at or near the 85th percentile, which is defined as the speed at or below which 85% of traffic is moving. So under the guidelines in the traffic manual, speed limits should be set at the nearest five miles per hour increment of the 85th percentile speed. So for an example, an 85th percentile speed of 48 miles per hour, the traffic manual suggested the speed limit be set at 50. If the measured 85th percentile speed is 47, then the suggested speed limit would be 45. So in April, we contracted with Katie Anderson Associates, a transportation engineer, to conduct the surveys on 18 roadways that the city's chief of police identified. The city also solicited comments from the Riverbank Police and Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department, who reviewed the reports and recommended that adjustments be made to speed limits on River Cove Drive and Squire Wells Way, and the reason for those changes, the engineer agreed with due to the information he received from the sheriff. So those two were changed. The results of the engineering and traffic study reports along with police observations recommend the following changes. Decreasing the speed limit on Claus Road between California Street and State Route 108 from 45 to 40. Establishing a speed limit on Antique Rose Way, 30 miles per hour, and increasing the speed limit on 11 street segments. So here's a list of all the streets and the street segments with the changes that are proposed tonight. And here's a diagram with the streets on there. And these streets were surveyed also, and they were identified to keep the speed limit, recommended that they keep the speed limit the same. So the additional information that I was able to gather, the questions that were asked at the last council meeting, legal counsel comments I received, Robin had stated cases involving enforcement of speed limits by radar interpret the 85th percentile requirement pretty strictly. The city is limited in the findings it can make if it continues to enforce speed limits using radar. The city must accept all the recommended street limit changes in order for Riverbank sheriffs to legally continue enforcing speed limits using radar. So I also got information from the traffic engineer. One of the residents talked about California Street and the concerns there. And out of the report, California Street road width and pavement conditions are considered to be conditions readily apparent to a driver. And the California Vehicle Code prohibits speed reduction for conditions readily apparent to a driver. The observed 85th percentile speeds were 29 miles per hour and 33, which was rounded down from the higher value. So using both surveyed speeds, a 30 mile per hour zone is a defensible speed limit in that area. So tonight, staff recommendations, the city council find that the speed limits identified in the proposed ordinance for each street segment will facilitate the orderly movement of vehicular traffic, be reasonable and safe, be in compliance with the traffic manual and California law based on each engineering and traffic study. Also Chief Kylie's here if you have any questions, and I'm also available for questions.
This is a public hearing.
Name's Edward Jones. I live at 2107 Patterson Road with that brand-new sidewalk, yes. See, I lost my train of thought. It was referring to...
Speed limits on highways, on roads.
God, I'm sorry. I just lost.
Further public comment? Seeing none, I close the public comment. Bring it back to the city council. This is the first reading and introduction. And I took the opportunity to increase my speeds along those roads. And although I'm not a fan of increasing speeds, I did not see a significant change in my, oh, a significant change while driving. Unfortunately, if we don't approve this, we take away the tools from the Riverbank Police Services in enforcing the speed limits. In areas where there is children out after school, some of those areas need to be closely monitored because I still see cars and trucks passing school buses with their stop signs out. That's being said, Roseale is a, is a big one that we have to truly watch out for. But I'm seeing it also on morale, or even in the crossroads area where they're stopping and letting children out. But in my opinion, is that if we don't accept this, we take away the tools from the sheriff's department. By accepting it, we allow them to use the tools, and hopefully, as we get more mature, we can start enforcing those rules a lot, a lot more frequently.
I drove some of the roads, too.
I think we need to support the police services, so...
Sorry if some of the residents are concerned that we're just allowing people to speed because that's just encourage them to go faster. But in my opinion, it is not if we retain the tools. So with that, do we have a recommendation for Item 5.1?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Item 5.1.
We have a motion to accept the first reading and a second on Item 5.1.
Council members Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.2. Thank you Kathleen.
Thank you.
Item 5.2, a resolution adopting a 2.5% Consumer Price Index increase in rates of solid waste disposal services pursuant to the 2014 Executed Finance Agreement with Jilton Solid Waste, Inc.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is an item that will be recurring annually for approximately the next three years. And it is a clause within our current franchise agreement with Jilton Solid Waste, who provides the city with solid waste disposal services. I'll skip over that. So Jilton Solid Waste has been providing services to Riverbank residents for over 39 years. In October 2014, we did hold a protest hearing for proposed rate increases for solid wa, solid waste rates. The new rates and the five-year franchise agreement was approved at that time. Currently, the services that Jilton provides to our residents that the rates pay for are a 90-gallon trash bin, a 90-gallon green waste bin, the curbside e-waste program, the curbside bulky item program, which the, our residents could take advantage of two times per year, illegal dump program, and our annual Christmas tree pickup. The Consumer Price Index that we take into consideration to prepare the new rates annually is defined within Section 9.1 of the agreement that we currently hold with Jilton Solid Wa, Solid Waste, and states that the city will adjust the maximum charge made to customers to reflect the annual changes in the Consumer Price Index, or CPI. These rates are published by the Department of Labor for the San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose statistical area. And we did want to note that currently there is no CPI available. That's strictly for the Central Valley, which is why we use that particular CPI index. Adjustment shall be based on the previous 12-month analysis from July to August, and a 30-day notification is given to our residents and was given at the beginning of October via our water bill, which is required by our government code. And I apologize that it's so small, but the actual CPI increase from August of 2015 was 3.1% for that statistical area that we use. Because our franchise agreement does limit the increase to 2.5%, then the recommendation for tonight is that the 2.5% increase be adopted. And so here are our rate proposals. For our residential customers who currently have a 90-gallon bin, their rates will increase 54 cents per month to a rate of $22.27. And the annualized increase would be $6.48. For our residents with a 30-gallon bin, they're looking at an increase of 48 cents per month, and so they'd be paying a monthly rate of $19.59. For those seniors who are on our 90-gallon disabled discount rate, they'll see their rates go up by 40 cents, which would bring them to $16.70, or an increase of $4.80 for the year. We also have our commercial rates that will be increased by 2.5%. Currently, the city does not collect any commercial rates on our commercial customers. We have Jilton, who actually provides those billing services themselves. We still collect a franchise fee from them, and so that's why we're required to adopt those rates. And so our recommendation tonight is that the city council consider adopting the 2.5% Consumer Price Index increase in our solid waste disposal rates. And these would be effective as of November 1 of this year. So these would be for our commercial customers.
This is a public hearing. Seeing no public comment, I close public hearing, bring it back to the council. Before we go on, you say that there's no CPI for this area, but knowing that this was up here, there was a BLS representative in the store going through for CPI, and they're establishing it for this area, for the Central Valley. So within a year or two, we should be getting our own CPI, which should help us out a lot more when we start balancing what our actual cost increases are compared to San Francisco or the Bay Area. Any comments or questions from, on Item 5.2? We have a motion to approve and a second for Item 5.2.
Council members Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.1, a resolution adopting the 2015 Updated Urban Water Management Plan.
Good evening, council members. At the October 11 meeting, Michael Rydell, along with the consultant, presented the draft urban water management plan for 2015. Based on the comments received from the city council and from residents, they were amendments made to the draft, and so this draft is now being presented to you as a final document for your consideration. Michael Rydell will provide an update on that.
So as the city manager had stated, this has been out for public comment. It also has been sent to Stanislaus County and San Joaquin County for their comment, of which we received none. So we have met the public comment period for this. It is staff recommendation is that you adopt the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. Once the resolution has been adopted, if you so do so, then it will be presented to the Department of Water Resources for their stamp of approval. Unfortunately, that's the way they work it, is there has to be a resolution first that we've adopted it, and then they will comment on it. And my understanding, and also the consultant's understanding, was if there is any changes, they will be very minor. So once we have the resolution in hand, then we'll submit it to the Department of Water Resources, and within 30 days, we should get comment back. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Question I have, did the city of Modesto have a chance to look at it?
Yes, it was out there for public comment. It was sent to who we were required to send it to.
That may be something that they might comment on in the future of our development.
They may. They, the 2010 Urban Water Management Plan, they had no comment on. Everything that we've done, even our self-certification and all that kind of stuff, Modesto has had no comment on. However, we do work very closely with the city of Modesto through the Stanislaus Twomey River Basin Association, so they're aware of everything that we do.
Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for comments, recommendation?
After Item 6.1 is so stated?
Any comment or anything? I mean, all right. We have a motion to approve and a second on Item 6.1.
Council members Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 7.1, staff comment.
I did want to give the city council and the public an update regarding the water bill audits that we have been performing. We did select almost 10 homes in order to audit them over a two-week period. During that time, the reports that we received back from the water department staff, we noted no discrepancies between the meter readings that were taken from the actual meter and the readings that we obtained from our meter reading software. So we're still currently working through those just to ensure the accuracy of the meter, and we'll be releasing that information soon to the public. Second, I did want to advise all residents that the November billing that they'll be receiving sometime next week will be only a minimum base billing. So the minimum they'll be charged is $154 for the two-month period. It will still reflect all of their consumption over the two-month period that we will be billing for, which will be August 29 through October 29. Something that we're currently working on is a separate flyer that will go out independently from the water bill, which will describe how they can calculate their consumption bill should we have calculated that them. bill, should we have calculated that themselves within this upcoming billing. We wanted to make sure that that went out separately so that it wouldn't get lost within the newsletters that we were sending out along with the water bill. And we also have for staff comments tonight, a few items related to elections from Annabelle.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. We have the League of Women Voters that will be conducting a candidates forum, and that'll be on Thursday, October 27th at 6:30 p.m., and it'll take place here in the council chambers, and that's for the candidates that are running for council member District 2. And, of course, Tuesday, November 8th is Election Day, so the polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And Riverbank's ballot process and the canvas of the votes will be conducted by the Stanislaus County Elections Division. So, they have asked that any questions in regards to ballots or registration, that they be contacted directly. And you can visit their website at standvote.com, or you can call them at 209-525-5200. And of course, you can always visit our website, riverbank.org, the elections page. Thank you.
There a link directly on your election page?
Yes.
We have Sue Fitzpatrick, our Director of Parks and Recreation, who will update us on a few upcoming events.
Mayor, members of the council, just a reminder, this Friday and Saturday night is the Haunted Hay Ride at Jacob Myers Park. So, if you would like to attend, anybody in the community, it's going to be fun. Carrie's been working very hard on putting up some very scary sights, so that'll be fun. Then we have the circus coming, the American Crown Circus, November 3rd through the 6th, and we're using the area across the street from the Galaxy Theater again in return for cleaning it up. We can use that property, and that usually raises about $3,000 for the recreation department, so it's a really good deal. We don't have to do any of the work, except for to clean it up, so... The Christmas Parade and Craft Fair, again, will be the weekend after Thanksgiving. It'll be November 26th, and the craft fair starts at noon, and the parade starts about 5:30 p.m. So, that's our update. We have a lot of things coming right in a row, so I wanted to kind of give you a little reminder. So, thank you.
Several of our city council members have been approached regarding some issues at Thunderbolt, and at the last meeting, we also had a gentleman who brought forward some concerns regarding noise at Thunderbolt. Donna has been in contact with the staff at Thunderbolt, as well as the residents, and I wanted her to provide an update to the city council on that.
Good evening. So, on October 18th, the citizen who had come to the council meeting came into City Hall, and he told me that the fan was currently running at that time at 8:30 in the morning, and it had been running since 6:30 the previous morning. He'd been up all night, hadn't gotten any sleep at all. Would I please come out to Tina Lane and listen? So, I got in the city car, drove over there. He didn't show up. I don't know where he went to, but I did park on Tina and ended up speaking with two neighbors. There was a woman at the south end of Tina who was working in her front yard, so I approached her, told her I was from the city, and asked if she had heard or could hear the fan noise, and she said, "No, not at all." She didn't know anything about it. I walked back down Tina to the north, just around the corner on Patterson, stood there and listened for a while, thinking that Patterson was a straight shot from Thunderbolt, and I saw two gentlemen out in the front yard of their home. So, I approached them and again explained who I was and why I was out and about, and neither of them had heard the noise in the past or could hear it at that point, and I couldn't hear it either. So, after listening for about 15, 20 minutes, I got in the city car, and I went to the open parking lot on Patterson on the west side of Thunderbolt, and rolled down my windows and listened for a while, did not hear a fan. So, then I drove over to Terminal, and I parked on the opposite side of the street from the mobile home park, and I positioned the car so I could see between the mobile homes to where I thought Thunderbolt could be seen. And I sat there and listened for another 15, 20 minutes, and I never did hear the sound of a fan. So, I'm not sure what the gentleman is listening to. When the traffic on Patterson is loud, it's almost impossible to hear anything, but once the truck traffic and cars go by, and it does get kind of quiet, I could hear machinery out in the direction of a diamond bar while they were doing their road. It was very faint, but I could tell that's the direction it was coming from. I could hear some trucks and some traffic on the 108 from where I was sitting, but again, pretty faint. I don't know what else to do. I listened as much as I could. I went out exactly when the gentleman said he could hear the sound, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to hear it. So, that's my update, but if, you know, he comes back in, I'll still certainly, you know, work with him. Vince Brown with Thunderbolt has been very good. He's been out talking to this gentleman. He's been out walking the neighborhoods. He's been coming back at 11 o'clock at night, 1 o'clock in the morning, listening for those sounds. He's had his maintenance guys out there, making sure that everything's tuned up and oiled and everything he can think to do. The gentleman that's been complaining about the noise says it's been going on for four years, but I'm just not sure where we are after this. So, just wanted to give you an update.
I'll give you an update, too. I spoke with the owner of Thunderbolt, and he said they have not changed their operations at all. I said, "Even with the new warehouse?" He said, "No." That the fans are as quiet as they possibly can be, and they go on automatically, and they do shut off depending on the drying, what they're drying.
Drying cycle.
Right. And he says that they're very aware that there have been complaints, but he is also very aware that sometimes the complaints happen when no fan has been on at all. So, it may be something else. If you keep in contact with Thunderbolt, in fact, I would like to go visit them officially and talk with them and walk their plant, so...
Would you like me to set something up?
We're going to do that through Norma, through my 10 visits to businesses.
Okay.
Yeah, checkoff, so...
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
That concludes staff comments for tonight.
Item 7.2, council authority member comments. Council member Jones Cruz.
I just wanted to encourage folks to keep an eye out for the calendar and take a look. We have quite a few activities going on, and it's a fun time of the year to get out and enjoy those. I'm also excited about the prospects of our search for a new city manager, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Just want to wish everybody a safe Halloween and a happy Halloween coming up. Watch the kids when you're driving around, so nobody gets hurt.
Council member Barbara Martinez?
A reminder about the Senior Elder Abuse Prevention Alliance, which is this Friday at the community center from 9 until 1. It's open to the public, so anyone that wants to come out, please do. Thank you.
And also, upcoming event, although we have a council meeting just before it, there is, 12th of November is the Veterans Lunch. Those of you who are veterans, please sign up and go. It's a fun time, and you get to see some funny people serving you. With that, we're going to adjourn for closed session, consisting of item 8.1, Public Employment pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957-BraVe-1, position title, City Manager. At this time, anyone from the public who wishes to make a comment on this item may do so. You have five minutes to make comments. I'm opening it up now. Seeing none, we are going to adjourn to closed session, and closed session will be in multiple places. The one will be here, and one in South Hall, so we're all over. Thank you. The regular city council and LRA meeting for October 25th, 2016 is reconvened from closed session. Item 9, report from closed session, item 9.1. Report on closed session, item 8.1, Public Employment, City Manager's Position. Direction has been provided to staff. With that, this city council meeting is adjourned. Thank you.